If everyone, welcome to the April 26th meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Huntsville. I'm Janet Watson, Chairman, and I'd like to ask our other Planning Commission members to introduce themselves and the city representatives who are here to introduce themselves, starting with Mr. Tillery.
Hello, I'm Les Tillery.
TJ Mears.
Donna Hendricks.
Jenny Robinson, City Council.
Gary Whitley.
Sally Warden.
Peggy Richard.
Kelly Scrimshaw, Mayor's Office.
Jeffrey Rice, Captain Huntsville Police Department.
Michelle Jordan, Planning Director.
And back behind the podium is Claudia Anderson from the Legal Department to make sure that we do it right. Our first order of business today is the adoption of the minutes from the March 22nd meeting.
So, Lou.
Second.
Are there any corrections or additions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Our next item of business is public hearings and Thomas Nunez is going to present the items that are up for public hearings, beginning with Barnes subdivision.
Barnes subdivision is located southeast city, north of Drake Avenue and east of Garth Road. These items are before you for waiver of sidewalks and non-perpendicular lot lines between lots one and two and two and three, also with a modification of non-standard cul-de-sac. All lots located in this subdivision are part of our R-1A districting, is approximately 3.12 acres and is also in our slow development district for lower slope. Lot one received a variance for impervious cover on April 19th of 2016, case number 8664, and this item also does a road extension of approximately 150 feet with an I-branche turnaround.
Is there anyone here to comment on Barnes subdivision? Anyone from the audience? If so, ask the audience members, and I fail to say this at the beginning of our meeting, but if you are here to comment on Barnes subdivision or any other subdivision as that item is called, please go to one of the podiums on either side with the microphones and introduce yourself with your name and address and then give us your comments that are pertinent to that item on the agenda. So, yes, sir, would you give us your name and address, please?
John Corey, I live at 1613 Drake Avenue. My lot is immediately south of the property that's being discussed. I wanted to speak in favor of the proposal. It'll, I believe, correct the longstanding issue as far as runoff from that property. It flows down between my property and the properties to the west of my lot, and in 1999 the water was such a significance in a rainstorm, we had nine inches in 24 hours and it actually crossed the street and did significant damage to 1610 Drake Avenue. So, I believe with the addition of the roadway and the culverts that are going to be installed, that it'll be able to collect the water and prevent that type of damage in the future. So, I'm going to speak in favor of the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corey. Is there anyone else to comment on the Barnes subdivision? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is East Huntsville addition, a re-subdivision of lots one, two, and three of block 38, a minor. Mr. Nunez.
East Huntsville addition re-sub is again before you for a waiver of the UND easement along west lot line of lot one and the rear of lot one and two. Currently, as the lot lines exist, there are three parcels that exist between, and the parcels run in between the homes. The property was zone C1, is approximately .89 acres. It's located south of Humes Avenue and east of Dement Street. This property was a part of an estate and the brothers would like to subdivide appropriately to make it into two lots where, instead of it being three lots with a lot line running through the middle of two existing homes. So, this kind of cleans up the parcel lines and the property lines in question here.
Is there anyone here to comment on East Huntsville addition? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Nature's Cove, Phase Four.
Nature's Cove, Phase Four, is before us for re-preliminary. This item was before us in September of 2015 and it, the preliminary has expired. With the Nature's Cove, Phase Four and Phase Five, there's a relayout of the overall property as seen here. For the Nature's Cove, Phase Five, there are approximately 105 lots in Phase Five. Phase Five has plat restrictions that set a minimum lot width of 100 for lots of budding neighborhood R-1A districting on the eastern and western boundaries. This helps to kind of change that, the layout overall. In addition, there was a extension of a street crossing a creek for Caldwell Lane, Caldwell Creek Lane. This is now, well, the street will be eliminated and there will be a 30-foot common area strip with a pedestrian easement for a future bridge to cross into and from Phase Four and Phase Five.
Is there anyone here to comment on Nature's Cove, Phase Four? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Overton subdivision.
Overton subdivision is located southeast city, south of Terry Drake Road and west of Old Bicov Road. This item is before you for a re-preliminary. The preliminary has expired as of January 2015 for 30, excuse me, 30 lots, and at this time they would like to re-preliminary. With the Overton subdivision, this particular subdivision has our 46-foot right-ofways with street trees. In the development of this subdivision, we have found that the transformer boxes for the phase of Overton have been placed in the wrong place on the design set via Huntsville Utilities. So, there will be some additional waivers in the future to adjust the street design. We've spoken to the subdivision committee before in regards to these matters for the 46-foot right-ofways and street trees, and the problem continues to exist. So, we'll have an additional issue here in the future with the Overton subdivision. But as it seems now, this item is before you for a re-preliminary because the preliminary has expired.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding the Overton subdivision? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Parkside Town Center, Phase Two, a minor.
Park Town, Park Town Center, Phase Two, is before you for a non-radio lot line between lots five and five A. Parkside Town Center is located at West Research Park and south of Old Madison Pike. This property is zoned RPC and is approximately 4.79 acres. It will subdivide the property into two lots, one consisting of approximately 2.74 acres and the other of approximately 2.05 acres.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding Parkside Town Center, Phase Two? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Pebble Creek, Phase Three at River Landing.
Pebble Creek, Phase Three at River Landing is zoned R2 and is approximately 14.32 acres. This is before you for a re-preliminary as well. This item was before you in November of 2014. The expert, this particular subdivision has, preliminary has expired and is before you for a re-preliminary to continue development. There's been no changes in the subdivision design.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding Pebble Creek, Phase Three at River Landing? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is the Preserve at Wheeler, a re-subdivision of a part of Track 3A of Williams Wheeler Estates.
The Preserve at Wheeler, re-sub a part of Track 3A of Williams Wheeler Estates is approximately 94.24 acres. It is zoned R2. It's located southwest city, south of Barron Ford Boulevard and west of Zerg Road. This item is before you again for a re-preliminary as the preliminary would expire in May of 2015. So, this item is before you to, ahead of schedule for the re-preliminary for the development.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding the Preserve at Wheeler? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Retreat at Goose Creek.
The Retreat at Goose Creek is zoned R2B and is approximately 32.70 acres. It is before you for a waiver of double-fronted lots for three through 44, 59 through 63, non-radio lot lines, one through Common Area D, lot one through lot three, lot four through lot 12, lot 35 through lot 38, and lot 95 through lot 101. This is laid out for 101 lots under the R2B zone.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding Retreat at Goose Creek? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Stonegate, Phase Three, and it has been withdrawn. Did anyone come tonight to speak regarding Stonegate, Phase Three? We'll leave that one open for future date if it comes back. Our next item is West Huntsville consolidation of Lot One, Block 88, a minor.
West Huntsville is before you for a waiver of the UND easement along the north lot line of Lot One. This item was before you for that one waiver and also there's a existing car lot, a trailer was removed from the lot, and for the operator to continue business, we suggested that they combine the lot that they own to continue operating in the business in the capacity that they have.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding the West Huntsville consolidation of Lot One, Block 88? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next section of the agenda is location, character, and extent, and we only have one item under LCE, and that is the Huntsville Police Department firing range.
The Huntsville Police Department firing range is located south of, is, excuse me, south of Swan Cod Road and east of Waltryana. At this point in time, I'll ask for Troy Summers to, I mean, Andy Summers to come up to give the presentation in regards to the Huntsville Police Department firing range.
Yes, Mr. Summers.
I can, I can work with you on what slide you want.
We've got four screenshots from a 3D rendering that we did of the site. The site depicts a parking lot of approximately 60 spaces. This would be accessed by, the access road into the Southwest Treatment Plant for Huntsville Utilities for their water treatment plant. It would be gated along the two entrances in. This slide pretty, pretty well depicts 100-yard firing, I'm sorry, rifle range on the left, a 50-yard pistol range on the right. That's complete with a bathroom, class area, and gun servicing facility there with the pavilion area kind of on the right-hand center of the screen, and a 10-foot tall range master tower to control the range. And then sort of in the, I won't call it the upper-middle part of the screen is a, here in the bottom, that's a tactical simulation area where a variety of different tactical simulations that the police force might encounter could be simulated here and trained for. The, all the areas are protected by earthen berms varying in height from 16 feet to 26 If you'll go to the next slide, we can see the plan view better, Thomas. Oh, the PDS, I'm sorry. This is a overall plan view of the site. That's a better view there depicting the berms and all the ranges that we have on there. The site will be fully landscaped, will protect as much of the existing vegetation to provide for both visual and sound screening of the site, and that pretty well sums it up.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on, on the Huntsville Police Department firing range or, or to ask questions regarding that? We may have some more questions during the Planning Commission discussion of it, so please, please stay around. Hearing no public comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is zoning. First item under zoning is Butler rezoning, and that's been withdrawn. Was there anyone who came tonight to comment on the Butler rezoning? Yes, Ms. Reed.
Excuse me. Jackie Reed, 303 Jack Coleman Drive. This is the second time that this has been coming in there, and I don't see any developers, anybody in here asking about that. And what are they trying to change the zoning to?
Can, Ashley, can you give us the information on that?
Yes, ma'am. There was a proposed rezoning request by Huntsville City Schools, who is the owner of the former Butler High School located on Holmes Avenue. They have requested to withdraw that application at this time, and if they decide to proceed with the application, we will send out public hearing notices again, but at this time, this matter has been tabled.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there anyone else here who came specifically to comment to that item? We'll just leave that open, it's withdrawn, and the next item is Redstone Two rezoning.
This item is located on the south side of Redstone Road and on the east and west sides of Hobbs Road. This property is currently zoned Highway Business C4 District. This is a city-imposed rezoning. There was a rezoning request back in February for this portion of the property that's labeled Redstone Three R2. The proposed rezoning for approximately 30-plus acres of this property was to go from Highway Business C4 to Residence Two District. Following this rezoning, or the proposed rezoning of this property, it would leave two remnants of C4, which are essentially useless, the Redstone One property and also the Redstone Two property. Also, a portion of the Redstone Two property stretches into the backyards of several of these homes that are located in the subdivision south of this area. So, the city would like to propose that we rezone the Redstone One and the Redstone Two properties to Residence Two, which is consistent with the Renaissance Neighborhood, and Residence 2B, which is consistent with the Ashton Manor subdivision. And the zoning will be consistent and there won't be any leftover remnants from any rezoning requests. And the total acreage for both of these properties is approximately 6.92 acres.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding the Redstone Two rezoning? Yes, Ms. Reed.
I got a question. Is, is this in Cummins Research Park?
No.
None of it?
No. This is, this is down way south Huntsville.
Okay. Thank you, huh?
Let's see. That would be Redstone Road and, and Hobbs Road areas. Is there any further comment on the Redstone Two rezoning? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is zoning ordinance amendment, Research Park signage update. Ashley.
This ordinance is just to clarify some, or excuse me, clean up some language within our signage ordinance pertaining to Research Park and Research Park West. Basically, it will add a few signage aesthetics as well as limit the number of real estate signs that are permitted per street frontage within the Research Park and Research Park West districts. This was something that planning staff was asked to look at, and we have shared this information with the Research Park Board, and we would like to move forth with this update. And the changes that have been made are highlighted in yellow.
Is there anyone who has comment regarding the zoning ordinance amendment for Research Park signage? I would just like to say that Research Park Board of Directors did meet on this and, and approved it and thinks it will give a much better look to the park, clean up some unsightly signs that, that are there, and, and give the city a chance to, to enforce some signage regulation in there that will make it a much nicer place. Yes, Ms. Reed.
Is this got anything to do with Cummins Research Park?
Yes, it is.
We're not changing anything from industrial development to building houses over there yet, are we?
No, no, this is, this is only about the signage to make sure that it's consistent and that it's upkept, and there are quite a few things in there, but it's all to do with signage.
What about the real estate signs you're talking about?
Those are covered too, aren't they?
Yes, this is only pertaining to real estate signs. This doesn't include any other signage in Research Park. If there are any future changes, those will be seen in a proposed sign ordinance, which will be presented later this year.
I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Thank you, Ashley. Our next item, is there anyone else to comment on Research Park signage zoning ordinance amendment? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Garvin zoning.
This property is newly annexed land. It's approximately 2.07 acres. It's located on the west side of Old Monrovia Road and north of Wayne Road. The remaining portion of this particular property owner's, owner's property is west of this property, and it's currently zoned R2A. There was a sliver of property that was still remaining in the county, and the property owner requested to have that property annexed, which it has been, and now planning staff would like to zone that property. The proposed zoning designation is Residence Two A and not Two B, which is shown on the screen. It's the area highlighted in red, and that will be consistent with the adjacent zoning of the additional property owned by Mr. Garvin.
Is there anyone here to comment on the Garvin zoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is Smith zoning.
This property is also newly annexed property. It is located on the east side of Forest Hills Drive and south of Doug Hill Road. This property is currently a single-family detached dwelling. It is one of the only two properties in this particular neighborhood that is not within the city limits, and the property owner decided to petition for annexation so that they may have access to city services and city schools. The property is approximately 4.2 acres and the proposed rezoning, excuse me, the proposed zoning for this property is Residence One District, which is consistent with the remaining subdivision and also accommodates single-family detached homes.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak regarding the Smith, the Smith zoning? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. And I think that's our last item on that agenda, on that part of the agenda. Thank you, Ashley. Our subdivision committee recommendations will be presented by Kelly Scrimshaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The subdivision committee met on April 20th at 7:30 in the morning in City Hall, and we have the following recommendations. First on the agenda, Ansley Farms, Phase Seven, a re-subdivision of Track Three, Ansley subdivision. This is presented for final approval on 16 lots.
Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? Oh, it's fine, I'm sorry. Michelle, is this, is this in order for final approval?
Yes, it is in order.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Barnes subdivision, the committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on three lots with the following waiver, on sidewalks and the non-perpendicular lot line between lots one and two and two and three, and the following modification, non-standard cul-de-sac.
Move to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of layout and preliminary approval on Barnes subdivision, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Cross Creek, Phase Five, presented for final approval on 61 lots.
Is this in order for final approval, Michelle?
Yes, it is, with improvements to be installed by April 18th, 2017, and with sidewalks to be installed by April 18th, 2018.
Move to approve. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
East Huntsville addition, re-subdivision of lots one, two, and three, block 38, this is a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the UND easement along the west lot line of Lot One, east side of Lot Two, the rear of Lot One, and the rear of Lot Two.
Is there any discussion, layout approval?
Move to approve.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
This is also presented for final on, to approval on two lots.
Okay, is it in order for final approval?
Yes, it's in order.
Move, move for final approval. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nature's Cove, Phase Four and Five, the committee recommends relayout approval on 100, on 137 lots with a waiver on double-fronted lots 131 through 133, 155, and 156.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I, point of clarity, want, on items for Nature's Cove, and maybe for the following item. The bridge, well, the street removal, is this a part, this is a part of item five?
No, the bridge, the bridge, this changes the layout for the preliminary for Phase Four, but the actual bridge layout will be, and the bridge approval will be in the preliminary approval of Phase Five.
So, removing the street, has HPD and Huntsville Fire signed off on that?
Well, the, considering that the, what they removed was a street for flooding issues, the area hasn't been studied for flood issues, so considering that the, they saw that it would be properly mitigated to have a bridge instead of a covert to obstruct the bridge there, or obstruct the flow of water. In this case, there is another entrance and exit off of Caldwell Lane.
So, then Phases Four and Five won't connect?
They don't connect via street, but they do connect via pedestrian bridge.
And, and, and each will have a, an entrance?
Yes, Phase Four has an entrance off of Caldwell that already exists, which was final-planted in Phase One approximately August of 2014.
Okay.
If I go to the Google Earth portion, you could see the phases, phase entrance for Phase Four much better. So, currently when my mouse is hovering, this is the current entrance for, entrance for Nature's Cove, Phase One and Phase Two. Phase Three was final-planted last month. Phase Four will, will continue to preliminary. Phase Four will continue to preliminary. The original street for Caldwell Creek would have crossed Phase Four into Phase Five, and those covert would essentially try to obstruct the flow of water from them, for rain in this area. So it was a planning staff decision to negotiate with the developer to allow for a pedestrian access bridge instead of street consideration in this case.
I have one more question, just out of curiosity while you have the Google map up. Can you show us with the cursor where the lots that have a plat note for One-A are located on the Google map?
They're the budding Residence One-A zoning for the Hampton Cove subdivision-platted areas. So it is the eastern boundary of this property and the southern boundary of this property. And based on the new layout, all of those restrictions have been met.
Okay.
I have one question. The road from Phase One that connects to Phase Four, it does connect to Phase Four on your drawing, I think I saw that.
Yes, sir. Let me go back to Phase Four. And where this note exists currently is where that road entrance is. If I can zoom in a little closer, if you bear with me. As you can see here, this is where the thirty-foot pedestrian ease, common area and pedestrian easement will exist, and this is the current existing Nature's Cove Trail, Phase One Road, and turns due east to continue into the Phase Four development, and would have crossed but does not. So Phase One is here and connecting into Phase Four. The boundary for Phase Four is here, following my cursor. This is the-
There'd be two vehicle entrances essentially in and out of Phase Four, if you can go through Phase, back to Phase One to get out.
There would be just one, one vehicle entrance for Phase Four, for Phase One through Four, one vehicle entrance off Caldwell.
Go back to your drawing, I'll just-
Also, with this subdivision, we would have required two connections based on the two-hundred-unit policy. Currently, there would have been a hundred and forty-one on one side, and with the adjacent a hundred and thirty-seven in from Phase Five, would have required a second entrance, which is what we have in the layout for Phase Five. But for Phase One through Four, there is one entrance, and there are approximately a hundred and forty-one lots in the overall development of Phase One through Four.
Okay, that's Phase Four right there?
This is Phase Four, correct.
You go to Phase Five?
Yes, sir.
I thought I saw something I wanted to ask about.
This here? Now, Caldwell Lane is here, and I can realign this to north and south depiction, same as if that makes it any better from a north-south depiction, if you can follow, this is the creaked area, and also on Google Earth, this would be your Phase Five area here. Now, there is a stub road from a Hampton Cove subdivision, which was a part of the agreement with the relayout, the original layout of the Nature's Cove property, which allowed for access to Caldwell Lane. So Phase Five would have an entrance, and Phase One through Four has its own entrance.
So that entrance that you were pointing out that connects to Hampton Cove?
It's a stub road.
It's a stub road.
The stub road, okay. It was a stub road out of Hampton Cove?
For, if I'm not mistaken, Mirror Woods subdivision?
Mirror Woods, yes, but is it going to, it's actually going to connect with-
Correct, yes ma'am.
Okay.
So really, there will be two ways out of Phase Five, if you could go through Hampton Cove.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions?
And Caldwell Lane will tie back in as well, right?
Caldwell Lane is to the north here, and there is an entrance here at Caldwell.
Past Caldwell, and that will go back into Grand Highlands as well, or no?
No, no.
It will still stop right there?
It stops, it currently stops at this property line here. So there is a terminus end of Caldwell right here.
Any further questions? Let's see, our recommendation is for, Kelly, would you read that recommendation again?
Sure. The committee recommends relayout approval on one hundred and thirty-seven lots with a waiver on the double-fronted lots, one thirty-one through one thirty-three, one fifty-five and one fifty-six. This is for Nature's Cove, Phase Four and Five.
And I think that we had a motion and a second on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
And now we're on to Nature's Cove, Phase Four. The committee recommends re-p preliminary approval on thirty-two lots.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Overton subdivision, the committee recommends re-p preliminary approval on thirty lots. Move to approve.
Is there any discussion?
Thomas, you said, you reported about some issue with the street section and the street trees?
That would be correct.
Utility transformers, what was the issue?
So, in the design, there is a forty-six-foot right-of-way. If you allow me a minute to zoom in, I can show you. So within this forty-six-foot right-of-way, there is a twenty-two-foot street section back-to-back with a ten-foot landscape, with a ten-foot buffer, and then the five-foot sidewalks are in, actually in the front yards of the property, and that's a part of the right-of-way design for the forty-six-foot street tree design, SEPTED streets. In this case, the, at every other property, the property, the utility box was placed at five feet instead of fifteen feet, which is the ten-foot space for the tree planting, the five-foot curb, and then the utility box should have been behind the curb. In this case, it is five feet from the edge of the right-of-way. So kind of limiting the ten-foot space for the street tree. And we kind of had this issue previously in Overland Cove, Phase Two, where we had to do some waivers and adjustments of sidewalks and easements for this nature, and we foresee an issue as well here.
Are you coordinating for future with Huntsville Utilities on those designs for their electrical layout?
At this time, I am unsure.
Yes, ma'am, we're going to work with the utility department to make sure this hopefully doesn't happen in the future, and then to resolve this issue, whether it's going around the green, the green bends or making them move them, but we're going to have a meeting with the utility department to make sure they understand the SEPTED design and the smaller streets, street plan.
Okay.
But we will still have street trees.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Didn't we make some adjustments through this planning commission on one?
Well, it would probably come up at the final planning phase of where we will have to make the adjustments on those particular waivers and sidewalks and sections.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Parkside Town Center, Phase Two, this is a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot line between Lot Five and Five-A.
All in favor of layout approval with the requested waivers, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, this is also presented for final approval on two lots. Move for final approval.
Is it in order for final approval?
Yes, it's in order.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Pebble Creek, Phase Three at River Landing, the committee recommends re-p preliminary approval on thirty-one lots.
Move to approve.
Any discussion on Pebble Creek, Phase Three? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Preserve at Wheeler, re-subdivision of a part of Tract Three-A of Williams, Wheeler Estates. The committee recommends re-p preliminary approval on one hundred and seventy lots. Move to approve.
Second. Okay, any discussion on the Preserve at Wheeler? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Retreat at Goose Creek, the committee recommends layout approval on one hundred and one lots with a waiver on double-fronted lots three through forty-four, fifty-nine through sixty-three, non-radio lot lines Lot One, Common Area D, Lot One through Lot Three, Lot Four through Lot Twelve, Lot Thirty-five through Lot Thirty-eight, Lot Ninety-five through Lot One Hundred and One. Move to approve.
Is there any discussion on Retreat at Goose Creek? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
West Huntsville, consolidation of Lot One, Block Eighty-Eight, this is a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on one lot with a waiver on the U and D easement along the north lot line of Lot One.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now moving on to location, character, and extent, the Huntsville Police Department firing range, number eight forty-eight. A public hearing was held, the committee recommends approval.
So move, second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I have a question. The, Thomas, could you put the rendering back up?
Absolutely.
Pavilion, that's an open-air pavilion, and that, is that the standard city's pavilion that they use for parks and that kind of thing?
I think Andy would have a, and Mr. Summert will have a better-
Les, I'm not the architect on it, but it's my understanding, it's being designed in-house, it's the standard design they use for restaurants.
The one you say at parks and restaurants.
Yeah, there's, in the LCA packet, there's, you've got elevations in the four plans of it, if you, I can get those for you if you need to.
No, I just needed, I know what that looks like, I just wanted to-
Yeah, I think it's a standard, I think it's the same look.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Vacation right-of-way, first recommendation to Vacate Right-of-Way North Street is shown on Plat Book One, page twenty-two, Piera Addition to Town of Vaiduta on Monteceno, south of Lookout Drive and North Nolan Avenue. The committee recommends that the planning commission recommend to City Council approval of said vacation.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Vacate Right-of-Way, a portion of Lookout Drive is shown on Chancery Record S, page eighty-one, Vaiduta subdivision, east of Fern Street and south of Bankhead Parkway. The committee recommends that the planning commission recommend to the City Council approval of said vacation.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is zoning. Mr. Tillery, would you give us a zoning report?
Yes, ma'am.
Recommendations?
The zoning committee met on April the thirteenth, 2016, and the following are our recommendations. Item one is Redstone Two rezoning, the public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item two, zoning ordinance amendment, Research Park signage update, amends Article Seventy-Two Sign Control Regulations, Section Seventy-Two Point Four, permitted signs by district, by amending subsections Seventy-Two Point Four Point Two and Seventy-Two Point Four Point Eight to updated signage regulations concerning Research Park and Research Park West districts. Public hearing was held.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three is Garvin zoning, public hearing was held.
Second, move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four is Smith zoning, the public hearing was held.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five is Webster rezoning, the committee recommends the planning commission set a public hearing for May twenty-fourth.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is invocation extension of bonds. Michelle Jordan, please.
Yes, staff recommends the invocation of Items One through Four.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and is there any further business? Then we stand adjourned.